Save it until the small.
He all said five.
He all said five.
Obviously, every day comes.
I think maybe three.
I mean, it definitely won't let you. You gotta be personally.
We're shooting right over right now.
And very meditative.
In control of.
Yeah.
Just work on it.
It's like the supplement about.
Oh, my gosh.
That's not even a.
That's just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was off. Yeah, I was off.
How are you?
That was man in a peril.
Well.
You can talk to that.
Do you want to get that one sweet?
I will, yeah.
Okay, let me get this shit.
Oh, no. Joe, give us a.
Yeah.
So for some reason, I wouldn't need that. I mean, yeah. Yeah. For sure. I'll. Make sure you. I don't know what happens. They die.
Yes, very.
I'm making sense. Was it sunny or evening or whatever? Yeah, I'm like, I'm like, damn, I don't know. Could you please stop saying this? They're like, stop.
Seriously, this is any other organization. It's on the next block of the days.
Yeah. Well, I get a little bit excited by the buzzer at home. Sometimes.
Uh.
I think a lot about. Yeah.
I just asked.
I was more. Biscuit.
Oh.
Whatever. Biscuit or whatever they are. This is Magnus.
I was excited.
Set the district.
Yes.
No. Five thirty morning. I've been out a little. Borrowing all that.
You need a four. Well, he wants us to dig us some next year's in the fall. And then I can use my help with my phone. He's back after. Not putting it in your house because my back is still proving present at one a.m. And then Zach was starting to be questioning three a.m.
I just want to make this. So now as I'm just. In the morning.
You get a.
It wasn't out of town.
Yeah, that's hard.
All over.
I mean, it hit me because I just. The baby just goes up there and hold her. And then my phone ding, lit up. It was something. She emailed me something. He's.
Good job. Good question.
All right, welcome everyone. We'll call the Town of Bullitt Springs November Council meeting to an end. As we get started, I'd like to invite members of the Junior City Tank Club, Cora Martin, Mackenzie Bryson, Zoe Alexander, and Kyle Champion to come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming out and helping us with the pledge this evening. As we continue, I'd like students from around the area to lead us off. First up, rooting business is adoption of the agenda. I would like to suggest that we amend the agenda by removing the closed session for this evening. Are there other suggestions or amendments to the agenda?
I know that we normally have the financials pulled out to be able to have the discussion and question. I don't necessarily have any questions per se, but I just want to see what the other council members thought.
A question about pulling the financials. Is that number five? I was against the agenda.
Yeah. But if none of the other commissioners have a question about that, we can move forward as well. What the issue has is presented.
Ah, we had one question.
Okay, I make a motion we got the agenda without the financials in there and the amended and move that to regular business.
Okay.
Same.
And then.
Also remove. And the closed session.
Okay, Councilman Thomas with a motion to amend the agenda by pulling out the first quarter financials and putting that in regular business. And we can put that at the top of regular business. And then also eliminate the closed session. Second, I believe from Councilman Bullitt. Any further discussion in the agenda? All those in favor say aye. Close likewise. All right, the agenda is adopted as amended. All right, Mr. Evans, Gardner Webb.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here. A lot going on. We're trying to fit it all in before the end of the year. It is November. If that snuck up on you, we're already halfway through November. So final home football game is this weekend, following the football game we will host on the border, an Eagles cover band. I know some of you are going to be there. Tickets are still, we still have tickets available, so I encourage everyone to come out and attend. Founder's Day celebration, December fifth at four fifteen, we are going to place a historical marker at Boss Gym. Some of you have been in that gym before. I won't name any names, but following that, we'll present our founders' medals. This year's two recipients are Dr. Shirley Tony, one of the founders of our school of nursing, and also the Royster family. The Royster family has several generations that have served on boards or served on the board and been involved at Gardner Web. Immediately following that, we'll have our annual festival of lights and the tree lighting ceremony. If you're up for a road trip this weekend on Saturday, you're not going to the concert, our men's soccer team is playing against High Point. First time in thirteen years that they've played this far into the tournament. And when they win, they will, it'll be the first time in history that they've won a conference championship. And so we're excited to cheer them on to victory. Stretching out to December, which is not far away, graduation is scheduled for December thirteenth. And the North Carolina Commissioner of Labor, and more importantly, a Gardner Web graduate, Josh Dobson, will be our featured speaker at commencement. We thought, who better than the Department of Labor when we're sending all these students and recent grads outhead to Labor Force? And then the last thing I have is just my gratitude as we enter the season of thanks. Thank you for the opportunity to come here each month and for your partnership. And on Thanksgiving, November twenty seventh, the Thanksgiving Eve Parade in Charlotte, Gardner Web's marching band will be participating in that. So make sure you watch the TV station so you can see the local team up there marching down the street. Thank you, guys. I do have a handout for you with the news. Didn't quite have them in town from our last board meeting, but I do have these for you. We had a few we didn't leave out of the lobby as well, so thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your commitment to these. Being here each month really.
Absolutely, yeah.
I only have been in Boss Gym, don't remember when it was built.
Do you remember the Rock Gym before Boss Gym?
No.
You probably don't. That was.
I remember Boss Gym. Of course, front pool was not covered.
Yeah.
And I might have been guilty of climbing over the fence.
That's off the record. Please remove that from the record.
Statue of Liberty is out in the gym.
Anybody here from the community garden?
They were not able to make it this evening.
Is there?
They're doing well, so they're going to have their, we've got a meeting coming up for that in December. But all of the garden lots were full. They are actually looking to expand. I believe the number was eight additional plots. It may have been six. And so this year, they added some of the raised beds for, that are handicap accessible, and those went over very well. Okay. And they've also partnered with S and K Greenhouse. I don't know if you've seen, but S and K Greenhouse has some kind of self-watering contained planter that they're getting patented, and so they donated one to the community garden to showcase that.
Also, it's like they have at the Rotary Club. They need a refrigerator.
Yeah.
And Doug Roberts is real big into solar energy. Has put up solar panels there, so they operate the power in the little storage building and the refrigerator by solar energy.
Yes, and they've got some information out there about sustainability and solar energy. They're working on a QR code that'll go to a landing site, talking more about that. But yeah, Mr. Roberts.
He had, he had the small solar farm in this side area.
And he is thrilled to death to discuss it with anyone. He would love to talk to you about it. So thank you for that update.
All right, moving on to public comment. We have, Mr. Holt has signed up to speak. If you want to, if you'd like to come up and speak for three minutes.
Hello, Van Holt. I would like to know if you could answer the question, when we're going to start getting yard waste picked up? We've been charged for two, possibly three months. I've had stuff in front of my house for the same amount of time. I had been told that the town is shorthanded. That's not the residents' problem when they're having money taken from them on their order bill. The service should be provided or it should stop being on the order bill. I, in my opinion, that's my opinion. So do you have any clues to when we can have yard waste picked up and not use a lien for excuse like most people do?
Would think a lien is a pretty good excuse, but.
I know.
We do have a firm that is contracted with the county that is coming around. And since that's been contracted out with the county, that's who we rely on now. So I've seen the troubles in town with that. And so they will, they will be around at some point.
So is the county that's going to do it themselves or they're hiring come on?
They hired a group, yeah.
The reason I ask is they're not picking up anything on county roads either. And I've kind of been a long time. Next topic I have a problem with. I don't particularly like music in the park because I'm one house over from that where I live. Right straight through the woods, you can see my house from here. It's already a very noisy town. Gardner Web has a, they're pointing right at me, an amphitheater or whatever they want to call it. I don't like their music. We rarely have any peace in this town, those that live here. So I don't know why y'all decided to put it in the park, other than convenience for the town to not put it in the main street. But it's very annoying. I personally do not like bluegrass and go pick and use it. Now, if it don't play in the Cali, that's some black Sabbath, something of that nature. I like to tolerate it more, but no, we don't have any peace in this town. We have a lot of noise from Gardner Web, and I don't know if they're still here or not. But they're pretty disrespectful with noise. And when you live close to them, you have to live with the noise. So that's my problem with noise. I complained many times, and the town's answer was to change the ordinance from something that's reasonable to something that's ridiculous, because now they can play seven days a week till eleven P.M. That's ridiculous. But.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Your time has expired.
You only get one topic?
You get three minutes.
You did not warn me before I started, or I would have talked faster.
Yes, you did.
Yes, I do. Thank you, sir.
It's all right. I can come back next month.
That'll be fine.
Thank you.
All right, next item up for business is adoption of consent agenda. The amended consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I moved the adopt the consent agenda with the financials. We want to disagree with that.
All right, that motion from Councilman Green. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Ellis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
But likewise, consent agenda is adopted. And that will take us to regular business, which we will now lead off with the first quarter of 2025 financials.
Yeah. I will be honest, I went off of my memory. I couldn't remember if we put that in consent or if we put it under regular business.
It was in consent.
Well, I mean, I couldn't remember normally where we put it.
I think, I think.
Oh, I couldn't, I could not remember where we put it.
I think it just depends on what, what we.
What's in it, whether it feels there's something that's.
We'll put it in regular business from now on.
Ron, anything? We've not done any FEMA's?
No, I gave, does a staff report attached to it somewhere? I made a staff report with some information, but I don't take it on. No staff report? No. Oh, wait a minute then. What's your questions on that? I'll try my best. Everybody looks pretty normal.
Here with the heart ones.
I would say that, that we do have, don't have any utility franchise tax yet. It'll come in in December, our first allocation. Sales tax, that's two months worth of allocation, so it looks a little low. All the other revenues look fairly consistent. As usual, dues and subscriptions are front loaded and insurance is front loaded, so those will look a little bit high at this time of year. But.
I was just curious why we didn't budget anything for yard waste fees?
I noticed, I, I, the only thing I can figure is it may be included in the solid waste by accident. And Zach and I might have to do a budget amendment for that. That's, that's the way it looked when I did them, and I haven't had a chance to do the budget amendment yet, so that's why it looks like that.
So what about this Cleveland County recreational grant that shows eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars in the budget remaining? Eighty-seven, eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. What's, maybe out of my ignorance, I mean, the money's there and hasn't any of it been touched, so what's the deal with that?
The Cleveland County Recreation Grant? That is, they send us fourteen hundred, seventy dollars a month for the park at Springmore. And then it also includes Lance's, Lance Rollins or Park Ranger. It includes his salary benefits that would be reimbursable.
Eighty-nine, seven hundred is the maximum.
Yeah.
That we're allowed to claim.
That doesn't look like any of it's been used, so why, why is that? Surely, if it's Lance's salary, some of that's been used.
I probably hadn't gotten there. No, I don't know why. There should have been something up there. I'm sorry. There should be the fourteen, fourteen seventy. I must have missed it. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
And then we've gotten to fourteen seventy every month, and we've also gotten Lance's salary for the quarter, so I just. I blew it. I'm sorry.
No, the same thing is that N C O S M D grant, the seven hundred fifty thousand. Nine thirty, twenty twenty-four, the seven fifty, and then the budget's seven fifty, but does that mean we, I guess we spent the whole seven fifty?
That's our revenue. We have received that.
Okay.
And so what kind of effect would a FEMA reimbursement have on this? I mean, we can't be reimbursed for overtime now, so I mean, what is it that we're looking for FEMA to reimburse? Damages?
Damages, we can reimburse if we have a part-time person that comes and helps to make. Well, it'll also reimburse like for equipment time and gas that we may have used or the equipment time, chainsaw time, generator time. There's a certain dollar amount attached to each hour, mile, whatever, that equipment is used.
Yeah, and where, so we, you, when you get the quarter, the second quarter financials, you'll see some, some movement in that line. It's just because since these were approved September thirtieth, we didn't have, we didn't have.
I didn't, I didn't like recognize at that point.
Is fuel, does fuel cost include in that? Some of, so depending on what we use the fuel for. So fuel cost is added in to the equipment operation use hours for like chainsaws. But the diesel fuel that we use to power this building, because it was our. Operation. Operation center. Then, I'm coming up, trying to find the accurate, you know, is it emergency operations? I want to say, oh, our city has sewer. We can use that money, so that'll be a hundred percent reimbursable. And then we've got our FEMA meeting, which is the second step. It's our recovery and scoping meeting, which is on Thursday morning. And so we'll have, the FEMA team will be back here, and we'll actually start looking through the damage assessment. They've already got a copy of it, so they'll come back with their thoughts. And hopefully, we'll start identifying actual things that can go on the sheet. So we'll have to add more budget amendments later on to account for this, that we. So we forecasted, was it six fifty that we've decided to forecast, Rhonda?
We budgeted seven fifty in each fund to cover any kind of, we were. We were caught. I guess we were conservative, and we wanted to make sure if we needed the money that it was there. So obviously, we're not going to spend any money that doesn't need to be spent for FEMA. And we were also thinking at the time when we did the budget amendment that we were going to have to pay for yard weight or the waste removal, which would have been probably a lot of that.
That way, we don't have to break you all individual budget amendments every month? We just have that sitting there so that we can, we can use it when we need to. Thanks.
Okay, under the expenses of administration, contracted services line. It shows through September the thirtieth, we've used fifty-three thousand, one eighty-four. The budget's three ninety-eight. It shows remaining three forty-five, six fifteen. Why is that like that? I mean, it seems like we're way off on that.
Well, our, we had some projects that were budgeted in that. I think maybe some of the courtyard, some other, maybe Bolton, maybe expenses or maybe ill expenses. There were some of those budgeted in there, so we just haven't expended them yet.
Yeah, is your question, why have we not spent more of that money?
Well, you've only spent thirteen point three percent according to that. That's through September.
Right, yeah.
And so why haven't we spent more of that money?
We just haven't engaged on those projects yet. For whatever reason, we just haven't needed those engineers, we haven't needed those architects to start work. And so that line is one that is not necessarily cyclical, where we would, we would use a twelfth of it every month. We usually use it more in lump sums. We are, we are on the precipice potentially, pending a vote of council this evening, of, of taking that line and using a significant portion of that money for engineering services. But yeah, we, we're planning to use that on engineering services among other things. That's the bulk of that line.
You're talking about moving some of it?
No, you all hopefully are going to allow us to use some of that for engineering services related to South Main Street.
Okay, that's another one out, and is that?
That all comes out of contracted services. Yes, sir. But we can't spend that money until we have a contract in place. And before we have a contract in place, Rhonda has to be able to stamp it and say it was in the budget. And so before we can do any of that, you all have to sign off on it.
I guess my question is, what's the likelihood that, that that three hundred forty-five thousand, six fifteen ninety-five is going to be expended between now and December thirty-first?
Our budget runs till June.
I'm sorry, till June. Okay, I'm sorry. My bad. Yeah, okay, so probably it'll be.
I, yes, a large part of it, I would guess.
That's right. We're not, we're not, not on calendar year or fiscal year. And then the last question I got is on the lease, the lease payments. Kind of the same thing. You've got nineteen thousand, three fifty used so far, and budget ninety-nine thousand. You're short remaining eighty thousand, five forty-seven, twenty-two. So how's that looking between now and June the first?
We're getting two new vehicles, I think around the first of the year.
Yes.
So that'll take care of.
Okay.
Their toilets are on back order. And so we have to budget, like we'll take possession of them on July first, but we're going to actually take possession of them closer to January or February first.
Okay.
And so we have to budget for them all year, because we don't know when we'll get them. And so we ended up saving a little bit of money there.
I have no further questions.
Do we, do we need action?
Yep.
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
All right, next up, in regular business, the selection of the engineering firm for South Main Street improvements. The staff recommends Bolton Mink.
Bolton? Yes.
Misspelling the, yeah, I hear. It is Bolton Mink though, correct?
Yes. And, oh, yeah, not Bonton.
So they were scored independently, and Bolton Mink received the highest ranking to execute downtown planning. Any questions from the council? Or if you'd like to exile?
So this falls into a really weird category of the statute. So this is a Benny Brooks Act, and so it means it's a qualifications-based selection. All that that means for us is I can't ask them how much they cost. We have to pick them based on their qualifications, not based on their price, because it's engineering, architecture, and architect, engineering, and surveying services. Now, if they are more than we can stomach, we'll find that out after we've engaged with them, after you also have selected them. And then we will bring back to you in December, the second place firm, and say, now, you know, we couldn't afford Bolton Mink. We weren't able to negotiate a fair market value price, so we would go with the second firm. And then we would engage in that process with them. But that is the way that the statute is written, and so that's, that's the process we have to go through. You all have in your folders a flow chart that I believe I sent out to everybody as well via email. But this just outlines the different funding sources. It's got the, the three, the three-ish, and we're parts of this, and then the eight total tasks associated with the South Main, South Main Street Improvement Project. We were referring to this as a streetscape. That means something very specific to engineers and to DOT. It means that we're cutting the road open, so they get very nervous. We are not planning to cut the road, so they like us calling it South Main Street Improvements there. That's just one of their, some nomenclature. Doesn't matter to me what we call it, as long as it's getting done. But any questions on this?
I've got a question on the timeline.
Yes.
On page forty-six, anticipate timeline.
Yes, sir.
Kickoff meeting in due diligence, December twenty twenty-four, task, great concept plan twenty, Delaware twenty twenty-five. He goes on, past construction, administration. When are we going to start moving dirt around here? Is that going to be October twenty twenty-five before we get anything done?
Yes, sir.
Why is it, why does it take that long? We've been planning on doing this for quite some time.
We have, yes, sir, and that. So in the request for, the request for qualifications invitation that we sent out, we were very careful to pay attention that we wanted firms who are willing to, number one, meet our timeline, but then, number two, firms who have proven success in managing town contracts. And that's why we chose Bolton Mink, because of the timelines submitted. Theirs was the shortest, but there is a design and engineering element to this that they have to complete before we can break ground. So that's going to include coordinating with North Carolina DOT, coordinating where that water main would go, looking at what the ADA requirements around the intersection will be, all of those kinds of things. I got an update from AT and T. I got an update from AT&T that, so the, the communication line removal, I know that we think of it as, as one thing, but it's not. They're moving separately. So we're engaging with AT&T Spectrum and Duke Energy separate from this. And so AT&T has already mobilized, has already begun marking the road, um, and has identified their ductwork. And they should be complete with the design phase of that, um, around the first week of December. And then they will be moving into the construction phase, actually taking their lines down, uh, mid-December to the beginning of January with completion of that in, in February, is their current timetable. So you'll see some of those communication lines coming down. We had AT&T out here, you know, we had Charter Spectrum out here last Thursday. I'm going off memory now, it's gonna be dangerous. Believe it was last Thursday, Mike? Okay, yes. They were here last Thursday. We're hoping for a similar timeframe with them. Duke Energy moves at their own pace, but we had a couple of people there that, that we call pretty frequently, and so that seems to grease the wheel a little bit. And so our hope is that they will also move, move pretty quickly. They have known this was coming. This isn't a shock to them. We've engaged them at every step of the way so that they can get the lines moving sooner rather than later. So I think people will see movement before what you're actually looking at here, which is more related to putting up a mast arm pole, painting crosswalks, and pouring sidewalk and courtyard. What they will see before that, before October, is the communication lines, which are the lowest hanging lines out there. That stuff coming down and being put underground, and some of those telephone poles moving. Because we're gonna get those telephone and power line poles out of the way so that mast arm poles can go there. And we need all that to happen first. So we gotta do the declutter first, then we can put our mast arm pole where it used to be. Does that make sense? That sound like a good, I, yes. Months on what they call design, um, that seems like a long time for me. But they say that they are overworked and that they are understaffed, which I do sympathize with.
So why were they picked?
Uh, this firm has not said that.
Okay. So that, that was my question. So if we go with, uh, choose Bolton Mink, they would be in charge of the bureaucracy of this thing and making sure the timeline schedules are done, making sure all the partners are communicated with. It takes it off the town manager and all Mike and all these other things and, and.
Yes. And then they will call Duke Energy and say, hey, they have a grant, they have grant money to do this. That grant's gonna run up on this day. If you want this money to move your lines, then you need to get out and remove them. And Duke wants the money to move the lines. And Duke would rather the lines, they don't, Hurricane Helene has shown us that they, their, uh, current line structure is not local. So they are, they're also feeling motivated, as is Spectrum and AT&T, as is all Spectrum and AT&T.
And if it's all the partners, they would have it structured under.
It does. AT&T's infrastructure is already underground. Uh, they already have the underground ducts and everything, so they're, they're, um, they're very happy.
Other questions from council?
So is it permissible to say how many bids we've received, how many companies?
Yes, sir. Um, we received two bids, and so we got one from, uh, McGill and Associates, and then we received one from Bolton Mink. You all, I'm sure, are familiar with McGill, McGillston, a good bit of work for the Town of Orleans friends over the years. We began working with McGill on things related to South Main Street Improvements in twenty eighteen. Uh, we have continued to work with them on other projects as well. We worked with Bolton Mink on the Parkmaster Plan and the comprehensive land use plan. And they're also currently doing our Safe Streets for All Plan. Some of that Safe Streets for All, uh, funding can be used for South Main Street Improvements as well. So that demonstration funding, that four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, we can use some of that. We can, we can talk about, so it's fine to discuss the evaluation process as well, if you all would like. Where we can do that, that's not an issue.
I was just curious how many, because I, I thought I read in there, were they acquired Jeanette Cole?
Yes, Coljonette Stone, yes, sir.
Yeah, and we worked with them in the past as well, their.
Yes, and so John, um, John Cox, who used to work for Coljonette Stone, and now is one of the leads on this, in this proposal, he was the one who wrote our downtown master plan. So he's actually the author of that plan.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to select Bolton Mink for South Main Street Improvements?
My motion was to accept the council, the staff's recommendation to select Bolton Mink as our engineer for the South Main Street Improvement Project.
Okay, that motion from Councilman Green.
Second.
Second from Councilman Thomas. Further discussion or questions? On the question. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. That is unanimous. The affirmative, and that moves us into contract execution then with Bolton Mink, which, if I understand, we can wait a month or give the manager a little bit of latitude. I'll let you ex- explain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have got a couple of options here. I did not know, I'm not great at guessing which way council was to go. And so I, we wanted to present you with both options. Statutorily, either option is fine. It, it doesn't matter what we do. For a contract of this magnitude, you all will typically receive that in your agenda packet, and then you would vote on it, which is perfectly fine. We will not have that contract until the December meeting happens earliest. It may end up, it may be January. I'm gonna be optimistic and say December. So in the interest of time, um, I was going to see if you all wanted to pass this resolution. It puts three parameters on the contract, so it establishes a not-to-exceed at four hundred thousand dollars. It defines the scope of work as intersection improvements, courtyard realization, water main installation, and construction administration for the entirety of the project. And it establishes a steering committee to advise and oversee the project's implementation. That committee would include members of the town council, residents, business owners, and town staff members. The only difference between this resolution and what you will get in December is you would actually have the physical contract. The contract will be substantively similar to what you've approved for the Safe Streets for All Action Plan and for the Parkmaster Plan. The only thing that's different is the ready sheet on the back, um, and that they're gonna add these things to it. Are there questions on that?
So the benefit of, of the, yeah, the benefit of, of giving latitude to the manager to enter into the contract is potentially speeding up the timetable.
Yes, and so as soon as they have the contracts to meet, because I will, if, if approved, I will send these parameters to them. So they will design a contract that meets these parameters. Then I will be able to execute that immediately, and we will go on and start the kickoff meeting and get everything moving as soon as possible. If we wanna wait until December where you all have the full contract, that's perfectly fine, and that's perfectly reasonable. It will just mean that we can execute it until the next day, so it'll delay all of that stuff, you know, potentially a couple more weeks.
Questions or comments from council?
One, I will also just add that this is a, a one-time deviation. So our procurement policy, um, allows media signing authority that we discussed, I believe, at the October tenth meeting. So this is not gonna be something that we normally do. This is a special circumstance, and so that's why it's coming to, it's a little bit different than what we normally do. It's just in the interest of time. But it, it's completely up to you all, if you feel like you wanna look at the whole contract, that is perfectly reasonable and perfectly fine.
Was there a reason why we had, uh, the four hundred thousand dollar thing here? Was that sort of an in-house estimate or something?
That is the, um, that was the estimate that we have plus contingency. That should be the item. And so that's why I put that on there, thinking that that should be the item. That number is budgeted and is covered by grant funds. It's budgeted as part of the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar OSB Young Grant, um, that we received.
Thanks.
So the, the four hundred thousand dollars goes to Bolton Mink fees and actual project, construction project, or you're just talking about their fees?
That's just their fee.
That is just the engineering fee.
Okay, I wanted to clarify that because I didn't understand.
Yes, and so you all, when we actually move to construction, you all will get a full project readout of that because construction documents, uh, you all have to approve construction purchases over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So you'll get the, whenever we start actually building sidewalk or mast arm poles or whatever, you'll see all of those documents again. This is just so we can pay them for purpose of engineering and construction administration.
But the two big funds that we have to cover that is the seven fifty we got, I don't know, a year or so ago. And then the eight fifty something.
Yes, sir.
From the grant, and then you're saying Safe Streets could cover parts of it.
Yes, sir. And that four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars from Safe Streets, this is kind of a side shoot. We can use as much of that as we want to to cover administration of that grant. There's no requirement on that. And so, um, typically they say like ten percent for administration, but that one, you can use all four hundred and eighty-three thousand just to administer the grant itself, so, um, and four hundred thousand is within the budget for the project, that I, that we have.
Within the total.
Yes, sir. It's a two point four million dollar, and that does not count the four eighty-three.
Okay.
And I was, I, I really am likely to, once we get the contract, we're not going to approve it. So I, I, I had a discussion with the council. My action on the project, I would, I would think we would wanna get it moving as quick as we can. But therefore I'd make a motion that we adopt this resolution, given the town manager, the, the authority that this.
Yeah, I'll second that. Okay, resolution from Councilman Green, second from Councilman Wood. Further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. That clears unanimously. And last up on the regular business is the, uh, town council procedures manual.
Yes. So I have a couple of options running here as well. It was, uh, it was, uh, Poparino. Thought we'd give a lot of options. So we, can I get to here? One, I'm, I didn't know if you all would want more time to digest this, which is perfectly fine. It's a pretty thick handout. So, um, Renee was kind enough to bind, print and bind a copy for you all. We can discuss this again next meeting. It's not requiring action tonight. But wanted to give you all, if you had time to read through it, um, you know, any comments, feedback that you have. The only other caveat to this that I will, uh, say is, as you find things, let us know, and we can make notes on our shot. That way when we come back, if you don't wanna approve it tonight, which I, I did not feel like you would, because it is a, a thick, dense document. That way you all have time to look through it, but just let us know the feedback as you go. That way we can make edits and notes on our shot. So that when we do come back in December, uh, or even if we need to put it to January, we can. That way we've, we've got enough, we can make it and have a, a good packet ready for you when you get back. This falls in the very narrow, very weird category of, uh, the board governing itself. So these rules are rules that you as a board create, adopt, and uphold, but it's, it's for you, but it's how you organize yourselves. So what it really does is helps me and Tracy understand that as a group, this is how you all want us to interact with you. With the agenda, with three minutes for a speaker, with all of those different categories. Does that make sense? Since it's a, it's a weird, abnormal kind of thing, but, um, it helps us understand how to, to interface with, with you all with regard to the agenda. I think we've had a question about how do I get something on the agenda? So that's something that's contained in this document.
Well, I have questions on that.
Yeah?
So we are, and I already have one, Springs Town Council proceeding, haven't you?
We have a new council member packet that staff created, and that's what we give out. But this establishes, and you can see there on page fifty, which is page two of that manual. It starts with, with rules. That way there's a, it's laid out, uh, a little bit easier and it helps, you know, if, um, so for instance, in the last meeting, when, um, when both, uh, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Mayor of Proton were unfortunately called away, it was a special meeting, so they weren't able to attend. And so we've got, you know, all of that information in here as well. So how do we elect a temporary mayor of Proton? What does the presiding officer do? That way it's all right here and contained in. And then looking at the election next year, you know, when hopefully everyone is back, we would be able to give council members this packet as well and say, hey, this is how you all, or council as expressed, they wish, you know, to act. And this is the kind of general rules of governing council meetings.
So was this your idea?
It was a combination of mine and Tracy's. And then Tracy did a lot of the legwork, interfacing with other clerks, trying to figure out what other councils do. We've kicked this around since June, May, June-ish? Somewhere in there. Just so that we could better get a kind of holistic list of, of ways that, so that if someone says, how do we get things on the agenda? I can say, okay, this is what you all have corporately told me. This is how we want to put things on the agenda. That way I don't have to try to remember, uh, how do you do that? That's the low hanging, for example.
So you want suggestions from us on this? But how, I mean, I, if I make a suggestion, how are other council members going to know about that before the next meeting? You, you gonna aggregate all that and send it back out or?
We, yes, sir. We can, we can, um, so like we can say, you know, Councilman Litten believes that we should have more work sessions than, or we should have additional roles related to this, you know, something for everybody to be thinking about. That way we can have more of the discussion, but a discussion that, uh, is in the spirit of the open meetings law. And then we can really work on it, again, kind of in depth at the December meeting, with the understanding that you all don't have to approve it then either. If we need to do some revisions, that's, that's always, you know. And it's a living document, so it's not something that, that we would have to close the book on. If it's something that you all say, okay, in March, wow, we don't really like how this is working, we wanna, we wanna tweak that. It's very similar to the personnel policy than ever.
A council has the right to change pretty much everything with the majority vote.
Yes.
Including anything in the budget.
Yes.
After it's passed. So, I agree. I have no problem going back to sending in suggestions and then having a further discussion in December.
I think the intent's clearly to give a streamlined answer, because a lot of times we'll have questions about how do we do certain things. But yeah, I'm with the, I, I'd sort of like to look at it and give some feedback if I could.
Yeah.
It looks great. Thanks for all the work so far.
And Tracy just reminded me too, it's a tool, so other, um, governing boards use it as a tool when, when interacting with citizens to say, you know, hey, this is, so this is why we do three minutes. This is how we do this, you know. So that it helps the public know more of how the board operates and functions.
It also helps us all keep the same answer.
Yes.
Which is very important. I've read the entire document. Had a bad night.
I read the entire document as well. I, I really don't have that many problems with it.
Uh-huh, I don't have any. But I, I think, I, I do think, you know, we do, it needs to be very deliberate for me. But I, I think, I, I do think, you know, we do, it needs to be very deliberate when we, when we do adopt it. But, uh, I, I really like it, I like it's, it's a well-done document and, uh, or I have a question. You know, we're talking about the mayor and the mayor of Pro Tem being known. I didn't notice that I got one thirty, thirtieth of the mayor's page. I'll check what's the same.
Yeah. We would, we would have to do a budgeting.
I didn't want to make a budget.
That four dollars I really need.
Yes.
That is there?
That, that is not what we need.
No, I would, I would, that was just a little sidebar. But I think, I knew, I knew, I knew there's a lot of work on it too, but, but, but I hope, you know, that, that when we do have our time for input and that, that we will adopt it. Just now I have, you know, like every year when we have a retreat, might be one of a good time to just look at it. If we're happy with it or we need to change anything, it'd just be a, that'd be, give you an opportune time when we might have some time and then discuss it and, uh, you know, go, we might run a call somewhere, like that's not in there or that's a little different. We need to change or something like that.
I guess I was just surprised we didn't even have it. So that's the reason I asked the question.
I was just surprised, was it?
Tracy says it should be reviewed annually. Yeah, and so, um, that way it's for the duration.
If we run this show, we can say annually if we want to.
Yes, oh, yeah.
If that what you want, sir.
Uh-huh, but that way it's reviewed, uh, at the, at the beginning of each new, uh, city of council.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, I do remember that.
Yeah. Any other comments on the procedure manual?
Very good, I think, very good.
Is there a part you want to dovetail into your report?
Yes, that would be great. Goodness, I'm sorry. I have a flip. Okay. I will make it quick, except that I belong to this. Uh, Tracy has found a piece of Boylan Springs history, uh, the original document that incorporated the town from March third of nineteen eleven, and so we brought that out here. Uh, we are going to frame that, um, and get that taken care of. It's looking just a little bit tattered, but we're gonna take care of it, maybe hang it up somewhere so that we can look at it. That, that was an empty find.
Yep.
Uh, grand marshals for the Christmas parade. Um, it is that time of year again. Uh, staff had kicked this around, um, and we settle on potentially doing co-grand marshals. Wanted to see what you all thought about that and asking, uh, if Mr. Don Pittman and Reverend Ray Wade Wallace would be willing to co-marshall the parade this year.
I think that's fantastic. I think anybody better. The work, the work they've done between Garner and the half of years is.
Just a little sidebar, you, through the wife is having some health issues. Had some health issues, they, she's come back home, she's having some more issues, doesn't get off. I think they, it's just a few hours after their return from the vacation, but that's just, yeah, but I, I think it's a great idea.
Do you have any emotion?
That was a consensus matter, but as long, as long as no one else has a.
I have an objection.
Sound good?
Another sidebar, I've had that opportunity to be in the presence of people when they mentioned the Shelby Christmas Parade, so I've never mentioned a, you know, a little punch in and say, you know, they, you know, they stole our day.
Right.
So.
That has been a hot topic, um, at several things not town, well, chamber events and other things. People will say, Zach, I saw where Shelby saw y'all singing. I said, well, we're, I'm not gonna say that they did, but you look at the day, look at when we historically do our parade and you draw your conclusion, I'm not connecting those dots.
I'm saying they stole.
Well, that's fine. Uh.
I guess.
Um, there are twenty-eight entries in this year's parade, last year's final number was forty-one. So remind folks, um, to get in on that. I do think we've had some, um, let's see, elementary schools are participating. So we've, we've reached out to the elementary schools, uh, middle school and high school. They're also gonna participate in the Christmas tree lighting that evening. Um, so they're just gonna come right back here. We've also reached out to Gardner Web, they're gonna participate, um, Tracy asked her, remind me, I know.
You can just say it out loud, we can all hear you.
I never, I never remember, uh, everybody, but we've reached out, we have done a snare. So we've reached out to, to all the educational institutions, maybe the R C C, I'm not sure we reached out to them.
I know two people that were trying to do it, that were trying to register today and said that the link wasn't working. So I don't know if they were.
Miss May.
I tried to navigate to the website, I tried to navigate to where it is and it was not easy. I had to go a lot along, like you have to apply for a permit and then apply for another permit. And so I wonder if, if it's possible to put that on the front page.
Yeah, we'll do that.
We also, for the tree lighting event, our plan is, uh, to have fifteen-minute increments of music with the exception of, uh, Boylan Springs Elementary. They told me they're not sure that they can sing for fifteen minutes. So, uh, but we've got Boylan Springs Elementary, Crest Middle School, Crest High School, um, working with Garner Web. The only one I'm waiting to hear back from is Springmore Elementary. So we will have that element of music throughout the whole event.
Um, just wanted, I, I know that we've already talked about it and you all have approved the budget amendments, but saying publicly that the town received the rural downtown, I can't say that word, rural downtown economic development grant from North Carolina Department of Commerce in the amount of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We also received the rural community capacity building grant, which is forty-five thousand dollars. Um, the R G E D funds will go, um, for downtown development related to the South Main Street improvements between the stoplight and roughly where the cemetery is. Uh, it will also go to courtyard, um, realization and then the R C two grant will go for amenities, pedestrian, wayfinding and otherwise in the courtyard. That would cover things that we previously thought the town operating budget was gonna have to cover like landscaping and benches and trash cans. But that grant, uh, the R C two grant will cover those things, the downtown communication things. So that'd be great. We're actively working with Cleveland County on debris removal. So far the contractor has removed sixty-one thousand cubic yards of debris across the county. This equates to approximately eighty-five tons of debris. Boylan Springs, uh, is the priority area for the next seven to ten days. And so, uh, we look, um, optimistically to, um, get some, some of that cleaned up. I know, um, Mr. Cole was here earlier, but, uh, we are actively working on that. Um, standing on, uh, the people at Crower Golf, uh, who received that twenty-two million dollar contract from the county for debris removal. The town received four thousand, um, eight, uh, four thousand eighty-eight dollars from Bank of America for our cash back rewards since we've been using our P card purchases. So Rhonda and I both, uh, did a small dance in the hallway earlier today. That was only bolstered by.
What was that amount?
Uh, four thousand eighty-eight dollars in cash back, free money, that's our sandbox money. Um, I, we'll find a hole, I promise, we'll put it somewhere.
Well, you know, we mentioned maybe doing something for the staff, for, for the, all the work there in the, the store.
We did mention that, you all did mention that, yes.
Go ahead.
We als, we also received, uh, eight thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars from GovDeals, uh, from the sale of our wood chipper and Ford Ranger truck. And then we are, um, actively in the process of surplusing a Ford Ranger truck that was at the Broad River Greenway. Um, and the old compact loader that was down there as well, it's got some damage, we're not sure how to drill it in, but, um, that's about twelve thousand dollars. And so Rhonda and I have been mildly celebrating that surplus, um, with no intent on spending it, but, um.
You want your call?
That's exactly right, that's not mine. Uh, web stock, so we're getting some questions, it's web stock season, needing to gauge everybody. Um, do we want, uh, do we want to do two stages? What is the funding commitment that we want to make? Uh, the T D A typically gives five thousand dollars for grants. They are not going to do that this year. Um, and so that'll be, wanted to make you all aware of that and we need to identify our next steps with regard to web stock.
And that's April twelfth.
Yes, sir.
My, my, when I was talking about it, I was curious about where we would be in our, our, not, in our not streets gate plan.
Right.
Um, that, but it doesn't look like we'll be in a construction phase by then, um, but potentially I guess we would be following here. So, um, I don't know, I'm open to whichever way works best.
Right.
With, with the stage setups. So it's really no help at all.
Thank you. There seems to be some, there did seem to be some consternation about the two stages last year. Um, I'm not sure what the rate on that is this year. Uh, I think historically the town did about ten thousand dollars and then, um, last year we did five thousand dollars. Um, the T D A also did five thousand last year. Just trying to see, the, the money we did last year was for, we, we wrote a check to pay for expenses. So, uh, we paid for H S T to bring the quarter johns, we paid for the bouncy houses, um, that kind of thing. So it's hard costs, so we just had them invoice us and we just wrote the check for those.
I, I got to, um, I just remembered this, I, I was able to M C the liver mush eating contest at, uh, this year's liver mush festival where I saw a man eat over two packs of cold liver mush. But also it's the liver mush and mutts festival and I thought, uh, that may be something that could be discussed about, maybe not this year, but in the future adding in a, another component that would fit in with, with being bulldogs. Um, half the people I bet were out there with their dogs in costumes and not necessarily there for the liver mush. And so, um, other things like that that we could incorporate to draw more people in because I, I do think it's the, it's a signature event of the, of the town each year. I, I just had to. What was the reasoning behind two, two different stages and two different?
So I think initially before the amphitheater was constructed, we always had the stoplight stage. And then after the amphitheater was constructed, um, we kicked around just using the amphitheater. Um, and that was some of the downtown, downtown, uh, our downtown businesses right there at the, at the stoplight. They weren't in love with the idea of that section of the road being closed if there was not gonna be foot traffic for a stage. It's a much easier sell with them to say, we're closing this and we're gonna put a stage right in front of you to deter the traffic.
Which they did get a lot. They, they got a lot.
Yes.
And I had some feedback, a couple of nights ago, they were kind of shocked, and it's, they got it.
So is this something that you can meet with your Gardner Web counterparts over the next month and then maybe we can.
We can, yes, sir.
A little deeper in December.
We can certainly do that. Um, you know, and, and if it's something that, uh, you all have ideas on, I think we're, um, so Nate is on that committee. Um, trying to think, Leslie Villarose is the main point of contact and Leslie's the dean of students at Gardner Web. Uh, and so she's actively looking for ideas, I think she's, she's energized around this, looking at ways to improve. It's a continuous improvement cycle with festivals. And so, um, much like, uh, mush music and mutts has evolved, uh, over the years. I think it's the same thing for web stock, festivals are dynamic environments. And so, um, every, it seems, the American Legion World Series is probably the best example of this. Every year you have to do the next big thing or be bigger and better than you were last year. And so, um, you know, there is no consistency in the festival game. So if you've got any thoughts individually, feel free to email me or text me those and, and I'll definitely incorporate those into the discussion. Um, anything else on that? All right, we are looking forward to twenty twenty-five, so Music in the Park, uh, the last one's coming up this Saturday from one to three, but then, uh, Music in the Park in twenty twenty-five, something to be thinking about. How many of those do we want to do? Do we want to do four? Uh, do we want to look at scaling up or scaling down the number? And, um, so that's something that we've kicked around internally, do we want to do two? Do we want to do three, four? Do we want to potentially do more of those? Uh, do we like those in the park? Do we like them in what will be the courtyard? Um, those are all decisions that, that I lean heavily on you all, uh, to make because I, you know, I don't want to, um, presuppose any of those things. And so just food for thought there. I think that, um, we, we wanna always look at ways that we can work with different groups and get different sections of our, of our citizenry out to those events. And so if you've got any ideas or thoughts related to, um, music on main and that whole series, please let us know, again, you know, feel free to send those to me. Uh, we are always looking for ideas. If you've got potential ideas on sponsors, so folks that you think, businesses that you think could, would want to sponsor that group. We, we're pretty, um, successful this year, I want to say we got about eighteen thousand dollars in sponsorships for that. Um, and so I, we will not get that number again, um, from the same people, let me say it that way. Because one of our sponsors was a one-year sponsorship as a soiree into Western Cleveland County. And so they are going to look to do something, um, the way that she phrased it was more sustainable. Um, and what she means by that is concrete and pouring something where we put up a sign that says, this is paid for by a blank. Um, you know, buying picnic tables or something like that. They're gonna look for something more enduring rather than a concert series. So, questions, comments on music on main?
Uh, go ahead. I, I personally tend to prefer them in the courtyard area. I think it, I think the smaller atmosphere makes it feel like there's more people there. Uh, people are able to walk to the different businesses down through Vintage Dog or Pelicans and maybe potentially the coffee shop or whatever. Um, and, and that is what we're doing with, we, we want to build a courtyard there. And so, uh, that's my own personal preference. I, if, you know, it's just difficult to see, I think Gardner Web students cannot know that it's happening and if it's across the street, they can see it and then maybe wander over. Um, versus if it's back behind the, um, communications building, it's much more difficult to, to see. But the, the, the Bluegrass Gospel Band was, was amazing out there. It is a cool spot to do it, um, but that's just my own personal, that's my own personal preference.
And, and I, I feel the same way. Uh, and I bet probably a fifty-fifty. Uh, park's a nice place to have it, but it's not visible. And another thing too is, and I think it's fairly profitable for the greenway when we have the beer garden if we, if we can have the park. Uh, like it or not, and that, like, that's part of web stock too, you know, we have it. We have the stage up here, we can have the, the greenway can have the beer garden. That attracts your college students too, I mean, that's just the fact.
Not our students. Not our students.
Not their students.
And another one of my old, my old faults, a long time ago, but, uh, and another thing too is I, when we headed uptown, I, I've had, I can remember, not a, he, he won this number, but people would say, well, they just come by and they didn't even go to the door, they stopped. As, the problem with having the park in the business building, the park, not just for this, but the whole park. I mean, it's just kind of getting back there. It's nice, but it's, it didn't, you can have, you can have the same crowd in the courtyard in there and you, people go, wait, say, boy, there's a bunch of people there. If you go down to the greenway, I mean, to the park, it's like, there aren't too many people there. Could have been the same number, it's just this vast area. So that's, those are my faults too. But I think they're great and I think we need to just keep working on them, they just get very much better. Appreciate all that Tracy does, I know she does a lot of that work, but, but those are my, my feelings.
Oh, and that, that seems to be in line with what, so what I'm hearing is we like in the courtyard better. I heard that before tonight, so that seems to be what I'm hearing from folks as well. Sometimes I just wonder if I'm, I'm often in left field and, and I'm just hearing what I'm hearing. So I like to know that other people are hearing the same thing. Um, Essentials of Municipal Government Course in Kannapolis is on January thirtieth and thirty-first. Uh, we've had some interest from the board ongoing, so we will plan to do that. Um, and we can all either carpool together or ride separately, but I'm gonna attend as well. Um, and we can all either carpool together or ride separately, but I'm gonna attend as well. Uh, the only caveat to this is, we're trying to get one, um, further west. So, right now, two places are being kicked around, uh, for that, the first one is potentially doing it in Asheville at the Western Carolina Center there, um, at Billmore Park. And the other one is at, uh, the Tucker Student Center at Gardner Web. Um, and so, we've been working with Mike Whiteman, trying to get, um, he's the VP for Administration and Finance at the Gardner Web, trying to, to get some, get a captive audience on campus so that Dr. Cox can, can pitch that new, um, online MPA program that Gardner Web has. So, I've been working with the League of Municipalities, um, and some other groups, and so I think that would be a natural partnership for them. And they're, the league is very interested in getting on the Gardner Web campus, and I think Gardner Web's interested in having them there. So, we're working on that, if that does happen, then I will just change, I'll plan for, for those of us who wanna attend to go Gardner Web rather than go to Kannapolis. Um, and I'll let you know sooner rather than later on that, but if you, if you would like to attend, please let me know. I know those are, those are two workdays, so it makes it difficult. Hurricane Helene convening update, I don't know if I'm almost done, so you all have this. Looks like a little free green, almost looks like it's an Our Town colors. Uh, these are the priorities that FEMA identified, uh, along with the North Carolina League of Municipalities, Regional Council of Government and the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Uh, look through those, if you see things on there that you think, nah, maybe not, let me know, if you see things to add, please let me know. This is still open for comments, um, but I was there all day Friday, had a really good, um, conversation. So, the lead, the County Commissioner's Association and the COG Association were given two million dollars to get in this latest disaster relief deal to do some programming related to engaging Western North Carolina local governments. Uh, we were able to sit down and, and have real meaningful conversations with Speaker, now progressman-elect Tim Moore, other members of the North Carolina General Assembly, Governor Cooper, um, there is a, a weird picture of me in the background uh, cornering Governor-elect Josh Stein's new chief of staff and wrestling his business card from him, but we got it. So, don't worry, we've been texting already, um, so he's gonna plan a visit in the spring. Senator Tillis's office was also there, Senator Tillis came to speak. Uh, we also got to meet some, some folks from the league, since they're based in Raleigh, we all wanted to see, you know, kind of the top brass there. So, it was a, it was a great event, uh, we got to speak with, um, FEMA Administrator and retired Senior Master Sergeant from the Air Force, um, Deanne Criswell about our response and how FEMA can better assist us, and so there's a lot of those lines of communication that are open. So, if you've got thoughts on this, it's very much a living document, we marked all over it, tell them what we liked, what we didn't like, and what to change. Uh, so if you see things on there, please let me know, or if you're thinking, hey, this is where we're missing something that, that we locally or the county or the region, if it's something that we're missing, please let us know, uh, and, and I'll get that put on there. Think, I was looking, let me just see, I don't have anything else on that. Um, I have got a pamphlet here from Tom Tillis, I probably have copies of this if you all want one. But it just says, Helene Disaster Recovery Resources. And it's from Senator Tillis's office, if you all would like one, we're gonna set these in the lobby. Um, but I have you all, I have a stack of them, so if you would like one, feel free to grab one. I also got a North Carolina Association of County Commissioners County Map Book. And if you would like your very own copy of this, uh, I, I can get you one. But it's, it's maps of the state of North Carolina and it gives you sales tax numbers and educational attainment. It's really all, it's all from the state demographer's office, so really interesting read here. But if you wanna crack that open, I, I can give you a copy, I have three of these, and so just let me know, you're welcome to it. Um, strategic planning documents, you've got two of these for me tonight. So, I printed you off a copy of the SWOT analysis, so if you've not done that yet, if you've got questions on it, let me know, uh, not a big deal. And then there's a new one that we got tonight, and it looks like three circles on page. Um, and yours is double sided, and at the top it says, who are we now, and then on the backside, uh, that's who we wanna be. And so, um, if you would look at that, um, and then just answer those, those three questions. So, the first one's about giving characteristics and those are the outside, then you move in one layer and it's our chosen things and then at the very center is what we should be, um, and so y'all will help fill those out and you can either scan and send those to me, I'm gonna email you that, I just, I'm yet to do that already and I have not. Uh, but I will email that to you, so if you'd rather do it on email, um, I could print it off. But we're gearing up already for that strategic retreat, um, so all this is laying some groundwork for that. Uh, and with that, Mr. Mayor, I conclude my remarks.
Excellent.
Play it, play it real quick, you know, don't you?
Yeah.
Can I ask him a question, please?
Yes, go ahead.
So, give me an update on Hannah's coffee house.
Yes, so that's the one thing I left off my remarks. Uh, Hannah and I have been on the phone this week and we are ready to execute the lease for that building. Um, the person that she uses to install her restock equipment, and I can't remember the name of it, just to be honest with you. He lives in Asheville, and so he is having a really difficult time getting out and doing the things necessary, getting down here, because he's currently trying to service all of the coffee shops in Asheville that have damage because, and I get that, it's a community thing for him. So, um, she's working with him to get him scheduled, to get him to come down here. Uh, she's also in the process of getting her custom cabinetry built. Uh, our portion of that building is done, it meets the state commercial building code, which is where we were supposed to get it. And so, we are now ready to execute that lease, council passed a resolution some months ago in February or March allowing me to execute that, and so we will, um, do that in the coming days or weeks. So, we have a memorandum of understanding with her already that outlines all the brand requirements. And so, she's, she's also already made personal investment in the building. Um, and so, I, I feel very encouraged that she's ready to, to take the baton now that we're completely finished and, and move forward. It did sustain some damage from the hurricane, there was some leaks in the roof, um, from where the, the flashing came off the edges, and so they, we've remedied all of that, all of that will be a, a FEMA expense.
And so, where is the SWOT analysis that you said we had unpacked, I must not have it in my?
You don't, cause you emailed me yours.
Oh, I thought you were saying you had the results of the analysis.
Oh, yes, sir, no, you emailed me yours.
Okay, okay, okay.
And so, you don't have as much on.
And, and one, one thing that, uh, and I, I've had sort of big talk about Hannah's coffee shop, in fact, that someone, someone asked me to tell her that she wasn't coming, so she might need to, gotta head out, yeah, I don't know. And then, and then somebody else mentioned that they had heard she wasn't coming, that's, of course, I think the two were related, but it doesn't take very long and then she's not coming.
Right, I, she has already spent, uh, I, I mean, I know ten thousand dollars. All the building, so I, I don't, and she knows none of that, uh, recoupable expenses from us. If she were to say, I'm not coming, uh, because all that's in fixed assets. Um, and so, I think she is certainly motivated, but I'll, I'll run that by her just so that she knows. Um, because she could, I mean, we could go on and get a, a sign up, this is coming soon, get the greenway signed down. Yeah, that way folks could, can see.
And, and at one time, we were gonna try to coincide the park with her, so, we, we've kinda dropped our ball, the ball, Mary, in there a little bit, cause she was kinda, well, the feedback went along with the grand opening of the park and her girl, so.
Yeah, so she's nervous, she was nervous about the courtyard and the sidewalks. Um, as, as she should be. So, I think that's been a, that has been her, her sole piece of trepidation for, for my perspective.
So, we, we now we know she's got at least a year. Based on what we just saw projections. So, I mean, she's good for at least a year, based on those projections.
Yes, I, yes, sir. And if, what we will also do is we'll coordinate at that time to make sure that we don't close down both access points to that building. So, we won't rip the sidewalk up in front of it and decide at the same time. And Mr. Mayor, with that, I think we're ready for council reports.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Thomas?
Yeah, I was gonna ask about Hannah's, that was one, one of the things I wanted to hear, uh, so on the debris cleanup. So, we're under contract now with the county to, to do Helene cleanup, to, how do you determine what's Helene and what's not at this point? Cause it's been a couple of weeks now, it's been a month now, so, I mean, I guess at some point, to Mr. Holt's point, um, I mean, I trim, I could trim all my shrubbery and put it out there and, so when, how do we determine what is and what is not? And, or do we, are we just not picking up anything?
So, our, um, so town staff are currently going around picking up on their normal routes. And so, they get things according to our solid waste policy, um, which is, which is found online and it talks about the dimensions that it has to be cut to, and the way, the easiest way to think about that is things they can, that two guys can get up with their hands. So, they don't need a tractor and anything like that.
So, we're still picking that up?
Yes, now debris, uh, Crowder Gulf is going to assume that anything on the ground in the public right of way is from the hurricane, because FEMA will reimburse them for any of that stuff. Does that make sense? So, they're not gonna ask, if they come upon it, they're going to assume it's hurricane-related and they're gonna take a picture of it and file it for reimbursement with FEMA. Um, because that's how they maximize their money. I'm looking now, so I have a live dashboard where I can track where they are. They have so far been on the north side of town, but not Homestead. So, that's the, they've been operating, uh, north of May, I'm sorry, north of, east, uh, north of College Avenue, but not quite to Homestead yet, and they have not gotten to Spring Forest at this time. Um, but everywhere else on the northern side, all of those neighborhoods they've gotten to. And that they're gonna have a consolidated effort over the next seven to ten days, they're gonna send additional units, um, into town. And so, uh, we should see them knock out Homestead, Spring Forest, and then move into the southern side of town, to shore in some of that larger stuff.
So, Mr. Holt's, uh, problem in particular, is it Helene-related or is it just irregular, or have we tried to determine that?
I did not know that Mr. Holt had a yard waste problem, let me rephrase that. I did not know that Mr. Holt was upset about his yard waste problem until he spoke today. But we will, we will look to address that and other problems tomorrow morning.
Yeah, not, not a problem, I mean, so I said, I, I applaud him for coming up here, but we should have come to you first and said, hey, listen, I've got a problem. Can you send the guys out, so, um, I just, uh, try to be sensitive to that even though it's, um, because there are still some, some telephone poles and wires and I don't know what all that is, still at Ramsgate and they're at Homestead there, so I don't know, is that included with the contract or is that for the company like Bell South, AT&amp;T, Spectrum? Who, whose, whose responsibility is it?
So, as, um, the telephone poles that are decommissioned because they're out of the ground, those should be picked up by Crowder Gulf. There are places where there are low hanging lines that are operational lines, but they're just hanging down. And, um, we've had a couple of, a couple of close calls with our trash truck. As those come up, I have a contact list of AT&amp;T, Charter Spectrum, and Duke Energy folks. I just send it to all of them and say, hey, somebody's line's hanging low, we almost hit with the trash truck, just so you know. And then they will, they'll put it in their internal work order system. Uh, so if you see any low lines like that, please let me know, you know, give me an address and then I, I immediately send it to that crowd. That way they can, they can figure it out.
That's all, thank you so much.
Councilman Wood?
Well, if somebody got the broken pole in North May and Homestead, it's very exciting, so I'm glad to see that gone. Although we have others to address, but that would've been there for a while, but, but it's been that long. I'm glad to clarify about the yard waste, I had that same question. I, I guess at some point, we, we will address unsightly stumps and trees down in yards that are not in the right way, I mean, I realize that's a lot of expense, I had expense, not as great as some others, but I had storm expense as well, so, just, you don't have to give an answer on that, but I'll just bring that up. Um, I did have one strange, well, I'd say unusual question from a citizen about Code Red. The citizen is telling me they receive a, a notification about their water bill being cut off, but they're on direct draft. And my response was, I, that I've never received one, so I, I don't know who, who operates Code Red.
So, there's a couple of different users for Code Red, but if they're on automatic draft, it could be that there were insufficient funds in the account, so when we went to draft the account, it returned.
I wouldn't, this, this individual wouldn't, that wouldn't happen.
My suspicion is that, um, I don't know if the, if the Code Red goes out to everybody that's on the Code Red list for that. I know I do get, I'm also a draft, but I also get the Code Red call. Um, so that's probably why, she's just automatically on the list to get calls, any kind of calls from the Code Red. I don't know if Mike knows anything more about Code Red than that, but you may not, you may not know.
Sure, sure. Because I get all of them, but I've never gotten one that says my.
I've never got.
See, I, I do get them and it may just be, I don't know much about Code Red, Tracy might know something about Code Red and how they're set up, but.
We've not sent one out that specifically regarding their water bill. Recently, there have been some Code Reds that have gone out, um, with reminders, you know, to look at their water bill for reminders on there of events, but.
I think Emily sends out the Code Red to our bill, she may have her own list, and that may just be it. And if it's something that she can take off, if you wanna give me, or Zach, her name, his name, we can take, take this person off there.
We'll send Rhonda out there tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I know, I, I also get the disconnect notice and I'm on a draft, so.
I have never gotten one, but I think I would panic if I did it. That was all I had.
And I think that the, the comment is if you have not paid your bill and not you're getting ready to be cut off. I think that's the comment on the Code Red call, it's not, we're gonna cut you off, it's if you have not paid it.
The only other thing about the stumps, we can't do anything about that until after March, right? The state has already found.
Well, yeah, I, I realize folks need to, some of that stuff is expensive.
Yes. Thank you, sir, Councilman Wood?
You know, I really don't have anything to comment on tonight, I think I've spoken quite enough tonight, so I'm just gonna pass on this one.
Thank you, sir, Councilman Ellis?
Uh, most of my questions have already been answered by the council, but I would like to thank the staff who continue to take care of our citizens, uh, as councilmen, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, Councilman Grant?
Uh, one thing I wanna share with you here, case of doubt, this is a, the report that we get each month from, uh, this is the, uh, this is what we get each, each time we have the GL, DCL, MPOB, and all the fronts that, uh, that are in our area. Trail, Mike, Lanes, Avery, I know the front, this is a comprehensive list, and I just wanted to point out a few of those. First one there, I just thought might have a little interest in the, the Cleveland Trail there, that's, and, and I started to flip over to the, I, I've drawn, drawn some circles around one that, that I think we might want to keep track of, and I try to keep track of them. First one there is, uh, NC, uh, one fifty East College Avenue and Patrick Avenue. That's, uh, where we come out from the west, come out in the, and what you see here is that, 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 if you look out there, I have a circle of score there, that they have a rubric that they use to give you the score there, and that's, that one got a pretty good score. That was not, it's right in, right at the town limits, I think, it's not in the town limits, but one that would affect us, uh, greatly. And I, I'll also like to admit that the DOD, this is, that's a recommendation from DOD, it's not from the MPO. And I, I'll also like to admit that the DOD, this is, that's a recommendation from DOD, it's not from the NPO. So, which gives it, I think, gives a little more strength. And the next one is there is, uh, Hillcrest Street, which is definitely one of interest for us. Uh, it's, it's listed there. You got a score of forty-five, which is still a good score. Has, has to be above, uh, a certain amount, uh, before they would make this list. Kind of estimated cost there, but, uh, it's, it's just good to see that these have at least made the list, but now they always say, when we get money.
Yeah.
And then you flip over there. Now, this one is the big one, uh, this one we talked about before. This one is every intersection between the traffic light here and, uh, uh, Highway Eighteenth. If you look at the price of that one, it's, uh, seventy-one million dollars. But what makes it, what I, the strength I think we have in getting is that the ones we just talked about are included in this list, but DOD has singled, signaled those out as being critically important. So, they're kinda in there twice, so that, to me, that gives them a better chance of getting, when we get money, of getting done. Uh, I think that, I think that's pretty much them. There is one that, uh, Councilman Wood had a question about, that I did ask about. It's, uh, there's one more here, so it's on page fifty-five. It's, uh, NC one fifty and Patrick Avenue, east Pat, Patrick Avenue's on the other end, down there where the new, uh,
Old Journal.
Is, is. So, these are just ones that the report does, but there is one that, that, uh, Councilman Wood was interested in getting worked on quicker, I'm sure. He asked about one of the projects, it's, uh, it's on page fifty-nine. It's one of the bypass, opened up another section of bypass. It shows it's ninety percent done. Uh, but, uh, I did ask about it, and it, they said it'd be done. It, uh, it'd be open, it would be finished, but, uh, it would be open mid-December. It won't be, it won't be totally finished, but they will open it up mid-December, so...
That's good.
But I just talked to my, I know it's interesting, then.
Yes, thank you.
But, uh, we continue to look along, and one of the things that, that, I just, just, it gives you a little comparison of, one of the fears that we have now is that with all the destruction in western, into the state, is they're gonna begin to say, well, we, we gotta send all our money there, you know what I mean? That you're gonna send all their money there. That, uh, the guy from Division Twelve, DOD, said, he wanted to give us a comparison. Now, this was three weeks ago when we met. He said, and in Cleveland County, there's two bridges that, that, that are considered, that, they, they, they still can handle traffic, but they're serious, they have serious issues with them. He says they're really, when they got two bridges, they really get upset. He said in the western North Carolina, one hundred and forty-six bridges that are golf. He just talked about a comparison there. He said, at that time, if they can get a four-wheeler across the road, they could sure it open for traffic. And that's just, he just used that as the magnitude there. He also said that when we met, that then, that there hadn't been any indication that, that projects that were, that were under construction that they began, that they had, they're already being contracted, that they won't, they won't take funds from those. That doesn't help us with any of these, though, but, but, uh, but it is very drastic in the, I mean, and, and we, we just, as we move along, we just kinda forget about them a little bit, right, but they still got a lot of issues there. But, uh, but these are just stuff from the NPO meeting there anyway.
Mr. Mayor?
Other questions?
I'm sorry.
Other questions that I had have been answered by Hannah's and the other stuff.
I will sidebar briefly, just to say that we've, uh, we interface a lot with GCL NPO. Uh, we work here closing inventory. We're one of the few municipalities who has perfect attendance. Um, on the staff side, we make sure that we prioritize those. Isaac has, has been at those meetings fervently. And he has also been named, uh, to the, I don't remember what kind of committee, is it's like alphabet soup?
Uh, GCL NPO, TCC, so I'm not sure.
It's a T, it's, it's a subcommittee for like cyclical, it's not true.
No, it's, I'm so serious.
It's, yeah, it's ridiculous. Very excited, very big things happening at the end. Congratulations, Isaac.
Congratulations. I mean, we, we have perfect attendance, too.
Yes.
I don't go in and pat, that's because he goes, and I, I, I cherish that.
Right. Anything else? That's good. Well, as we enter the Thanksgiving and Christmas season, I, I, we've, we've learned what can bring us peace and quiet and calm. And so it's on you, Mr. Evans, to get a Metallica cover band. Is there a motion to adjourn? Say it. All those are prepared to say that.
Of course, bring them, yes.